I'd like to call to order the March 1st, 2016, regular meeting of the Bowling Green Board of Commissioners. Invite you to stand if you wish, while Assistant Chief Brian Harrell from the Bowling Green Police Department provides our invocation tonight.
Pray with me, please. Heavenly Father, we come to you today thankful for the opportunity to assemble and make decisions on behalf of this city. I would pray that you would guide this process, those who sit in the mayor's chair and the Board of Commissioners, that you would guide their decisions with wisdom and character, that those who assemble here today, beginning careers, that you would watch over them and leave in their minds the gravity of the careers that they step into, that you would lead this assembly and this agenda in all things to your will. It's in Jesus' holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Come in, the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Williams.
Here.
Commissioner Dunning.
Here.
Commissioner Hill.
Here.
Commissioner Paragon.
Here.
Mayor Wilkerson.
Here.
Mr. DeFabo, do you have any awards or recognitions tonight?
I do not, Mayor.
I have a couple of things I'd like to bring to your attention. We want to congratulate Master Police Officer Jamie Pierce on his retirement. He had almost fifteen years with us, but a few years with Lexington Police before that, and wish him well in his new real estate business, and I'm sure if you check his webpage, you'll have his number up there for you. Also, this past week, we had the Bowling Green Police Department Employee Awards. I just want to mention a couple of those if I can. Had our Seatbelt Restraint Award, Michael Yonker. The DUI Award went to Officer Ed Pullley. The Bill Key Traffic Enforcement Award, and the MVP Award went to Michelle Owen. Our Character Award was Rick Bissett. The Civilian of the Year was Jen Edwards, and our Officer of the Year was Ryan Dillon. So we'd like to congratulate them on those awards for 2015. Any other awards or recognitions? All right, do you have any comments, Mr. DeFabo?
I do, Mayor. Thank you very much. Three items. With your courtesy, I'd like to pull item number four. It's not ready at this point. We thought it would be, but it's not. Second, out of necessity, I need to enter a late file, and Kate will read that. You want to do that now?
We just need a motion and second to add the late file to the agenda at this point. So move.
Second.
Motion by Hill and second by Paragon. I believe there's any discussion on adding to the agenda. Please call the roll.
Williams.
Yes.
Dunning.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Third item is that we'll need to have an executive session. Katie will read the reasons.
Pursuant to KRS 6218-10-1C, for discussions of proposed repending litigation against her on behalf of the city. So move.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Williams.
Yes.
Dunning.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
Anything else?
No, that's all. Thank you, Mayor.
Approval of the minutes for the regular meeting on February 16th, 2016, and the special meeting on February 19th, 2016.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Paragon. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Williams.
Yes.
Dunning.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. This is the time where in all of our regular meetings, we have an opportunity for the public to make a comment on an item that's not on tonight's agendas, and we invite them to come forward at this time. I believe we have someone with us. If you'll come up and state your name and address, please, for the record.
Aaron Darst, 1358 College Street. Hello. My name is Aaron Darst. I'm a student at Western Kentucky University, a Bowling Green native, and I am a lesbian, and I'm here to speak in support of a fairness ordinance in Bowling Green. We saw massive support recently during our fairness rally in Frankfurt on the 17th of February. People from all over the state came in support of fairness and equality for LGBTQ Kentuckians. The mayor of Midway spoke about how easy it was to pass a fairness ordinance in their city, made easier by the fact that it is the right thing to do. The citizens of Bowling Green have shown a particularly strong support for fairness ordinance. At every fairness event that I volunteer for, I hear a lot of people who are very shocked that we do not have this ordinance in place. Support is further shown by the nearly 1,000 petitions that we delivered to you last November. As Sean Stevens of Whitesquirrel and Toby Fatsinger of FOIA House have told you, a fairness ordinance is good for Bowling Green business, and it's good for keeping us competitive. As Dr. Patty Mentor told you, a fairness ordinance is important for the retention of bright, young minds that will make Bowling Green better. And as I am now telling you, a fairness ordinance is necessary to make Bowling Green a safe and welcoming place for people who call it home. Bowling Green is my home. It's where I grew up, it's where my friends are and where my family are, and honestly, it's where I want to spend the rest of my life. For a very long time, I felt like I needed to go someplace else to feel more accepted and more welcome and more loved, but I want to make Bowling Green the place where I feel that. And I believe that by passing a fairness ordinance, that would make that a reality for a lot of people. I want the values of the citizens of my hometown to be represented in our legislation. A fairness ordinance is a fundamental addition that would make the lives of many so much better. It would give our LGBTQ Bowling Green residents the protections that they deserve. I deserve to know that I won't be fired from my job if my boss finds out that I'm gay. I deserve to know that I can hold my girlfriend's hand in a park without being kicked out. I deserve to know that I can eat at a restaurant without being refused service because of who I love. It's time to listen to your constituents, and I ask that you put a fairness ordinance on the agenda and do the right thing. Thank you.
Comments, or anyone else? All right, we'll move to the items for consideration. The first item is Municipal Order 2016-32.
Municipal Order approving the probationary appointments of Kettler M. Collexti, R. Andre Evans, Mario M. Ibarra, Brian M. O'Callahan, Jeffrey O'Brien Pettigo, Charles D. Wagner, and Dennis W. Wolf to the position of firefighter in the fire department.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams. Mr. DeFabo.
As the commission has reminded, we're going through quite a demographic changes in our own workforce, as evidenced by the number of retirements that we're having in our police department and our fire department, as well across all city services. Tonight, that reflected in the largest amount of police and firemen that we have ever hired in one single night. Part of the reason we've hired a large number of people is because of the demographic shifts, also the nature of training that we do on a cadre basis. I thought it'd be important to bring up two individuals, one first from the fire department, Dustin Rockrohr, who will explain to you the process that the fire department went through in vetting and selecting the candidates for you, and he will also give us all the courtesy of introducing this candidate class. Dustin?
Thanks, sir. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to present tonight. I'd like to start by telling you a little bit about the selection process. Chapter one. I'm just kidding. The reality is that this is the first time I was able to lead the process or be considered the pledge master, as Mr. DeFabo says, and it was an honor for me. To call someone and tell them that you are giving them a new career and a life-changing opportunity in the fire service is something I'd never experienced, and it's a highlight of my tenure as the chief in this department, so I thank you all for that. This is a short explanation of the hiring process. Working closely with human resources, the fire department conducted an extensive recruitment and selection process to compile the final candidate selections we're presenting today. The process started on August of 2015 with advertising and online notifications. So statistics from what we received from that, 212 applications were received, 137 applicants showed for the written testing, 98 of those applicants forwarded to the fire department for evaluation, 46 candidates selected for interview, 34 candidates had passed the candidate physical abilities test. There were 19 desirable candidates forwarded to HR from the fire department with a top seven ranked candidate list for recommendations for immediate hire. The hiring process starts with an application that's done online with the city, a written test with extensive human relations and academic skill evaluation provided by Ergometrics, a third-party evaluator, with a video-based testing system guaranteeing low adverse effect. Personality assessment instruments, which is basically a behavioral analysis, written questionnaires are conducted, departmental interview with six fire members, including two deputy chiefs, one assistant chief, one captain, one sergeant, one firefighter, always attended by the human resources department, one personnel, and the city manager took part this year in selected interviews. We conduct background checks on all personnel. The candidate physical abilities test is state mandated, and it is conducted for all personnel, a third-party polygraph interview, several departmental application file reviews throughout the process, reference checks are conducted on all applicants, job history review and checks, follow-up candidate meetings with department administrative chiefs, and in that, it was Chief Napier and myself, we usually go over expectations of the department. We talk with the individuals to make sure that the time has passed, hasn't changed anything in their life, and give them a chance to vet any expectations they have of the city for them. We conduct medical physicals for all applicants, and then offer conditional offers of employment. In our final list of candidate applicants, they come very qualified and very well-referred through the community. In this group, we hold two bachelor's degrees. Several of these young men have firefighter one and firefighter two certifications. We have four EMTs in our candidate list. There are four career firefighters that will transfer from other departments to the Bowling Green Fire Department with over 400 hours of training each, and I think that says a lot about the quality of our department. I'd like to take this time to introduce the candidates to you. Candidates, as I call your name, please stand and remain standing. Kettler Collexti. Mario Ibarra. O'Brien Pettigo. Ronald Evans. Charles Wagner. Brian Michael O'Callahan. Dennis Wolf could not attend tonight, he's working at Owensboro Fire Department this evening. You may be seated. It's with great confidence that I present to you the 2016 Bowling Green Fire Department Candidate Selections for Board of Commissioners Consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Dustin. Appreciate that. I have a motion on the floor. Is there any discussion? Nobody's got anything to say. We've got seven people out there in a room full of family members. Well, we're excited for you. I know one gentleman came last meeting just to visit with us to make sure he was in the right place for this night's meeting, so appreciate you coming back. No other comments? Please call the roll.
Williams.
Yes.
Dunning.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. And not to be outdone, Municipal Order 2016-33.
Municipal Order approving the probationary appointments of Jose A. Alisea Martinez, Frederick B. Byers Jr., Benjamin A. Craig, John G. Deeb II, N. Clay Dewis, Stephen B. Irvin, Nicholas M. Jewell, Devin L. Mitchell, and Patrick V. Smith, and Joshua A. Stewart to the position of police officer in the police department.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Dunning, second by Hill. Mr. DeFabo.
Thank you, Mayor. The same demographic need and class prerogative exists in our police department, and it's my honor tonight to introduce Melanie Watt, the pledge class leader, who is going to give the same talk and recommend the class to you all.
Welcome.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here. We, too, began our hiring process in August of 2015. We had 173 online applicants for position of police officer. In October, 108 of those applicants showed to take the personality assessment inventory and register for POPS testing. Seventy-one candidates took the fitness test, with 66 of those passing. Twenty-four of those applicants were scheduled for polygraph and psychological evaluation in December. Twenty-two candidates then went on to background investigations, with 17 candidates being interviewed in February, with finally 10 moving forward with conditional job offers. The following people are being recommended for employment with the Bowling Green Police Department tonight. Please stand when I call your name. Jose Alicia Martinez. Frederick Byers Jr. Benjamin Craig. John Deeb II. Clay Dewis. Stephen Irvin. Nicholas Jewell. Devin Mitchell. Patrick Smith. And Joshua Stewart. Might make note, Benjamin Craig could not be here tonight with us. These are the 2016 police candidates for your consideration. Thank you.
All right, motions on the floor. Any comments?
Yes, Your Honor. Just one. The Deeb gentleman, did we run a good background check on him?
Double.
Sir?
Double.
Oh, okay. I just wanted to make sure we were on the right track. Outstanding group of individuals, proud of all of you. Be a good experience for you, being on the Bowling Green Police Department. Lot different than when I went on in 1969. A whole lot different. I had one bullet, set of handcuffs, and that was about it. So we've come a long way, and we're proud of all of you, firemen, policemen. You make our city what it is today, and if anyone has anything negative to say about any of you, tell them to see us. We're the one that catches the hail, tell them to see us. And we're going to support you 100 percent, as long as you earn your job, 110 percent. Now, keep in mind, we know you're going to do what is right, but if you do something wrong, our job is to protect the public, and I know that's not going to happen in either one of these groups. We're proud of you. Fireman will be under a new chief, police department will be under an old chief.
An old chief.
That's all, Your Honor.
Any other comments?
I'd like to say thank you to the committee also that's worked so hard on the behind-the-scenes.
We have several of them with us. Thank you all so much for your input.
Make them stand up.
I was going to say, Rick Starks, Hoota Melkey.
Vicki Elrod.
Vicki Elrod. I'm trying to see who else. Chuck Glass. Thank you all.
I'd just like to... Alice. Alice.
Alice. Alice Gatewood. Couldn't think of... Your name could not come to my mind. I apologize to you.
Wouldn't give you recognition.
Yes. Being on the committee, go ahead. Do you want to stand up again?
Mayor, I'd just like to say, two of these candidates were cadets for us, and I think it's really admirable. Both of them I've had experience with, or four, or two. I know...
Three, four?
Two previous candidates, and two current.
Okay. I apologize. Well, two of them I've had interactions with, so I'm really honored that they still want to be police officers. On met, I'm old. I forgot how to park a car. I didn't know it had to go a certain direction, so they kindly reminded me, so I appreciate that. And the other one had the opportunity, when my alarm at my home went off and I was scared to death, he got to tour my garage and search it, and I'm just thankful he came out alive. So, thank you all for joining the police department. Appreciate it.
We look forward to seeing you in uniform out there doing your job. It's a big job, and we know you've got a lot of training to get through to get to it, but I do want to thank both departments, especially, I like the comment or the motto that Chief Hawkins has used in always hiring, we hire for character, but we train for skills. So it'll be a long time before you get out there, you've got a lot of training to go, so thank you so much. And we'll just take a couple-minute recess. I know all of you don't want to sit here through the rest of this meeting, so I'll allow you all the opportunity to step out. Oh, yeah, we got a vote. Please call the roll.
All right, Williams.
Yes.
Dunning.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
And you are excused if you'd like to step out. Thank you so much. [applause] I know we're better than a... Will, if you're back there, we're ready to go back again. Still rolling. All right. I know we have some more hires to go, and didn't want to let you all think that we'd forgotten about you at all. Municipal Order 2016-34.
Municipal Order approving the promotion of T. Landry Spears to the position of Senior Parks Facility Maintainer in the Parks and Recreation Department.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Hill and second by Paragon. Mr. DeFabo.
Thank you, Mayor. Since this is a promotion, I would ask that Brent Belcher come forward to put his name before you, of the one he would like to recommend for promotion. Brent?
Little Brent. Amen. Little Brent. Thank you for... Thank you, Mayor Commissioners, for the time and the "don't forget about us" section of the agenda tonight. Parks and Rec has a promotion of her own. Just don't... We don't have a pledge class unless you consider a class of one. Anyway, it is my honor to recommend Landry Fields... I'm sorry. Landry Spears is with us today. Landry Fields is a pro basketball player, but Landry's with us today. He's worked with us since 2013 in the landscape division. I'm proud to say that Landry, he came to us as a landscape gardener, has been in his entry-level position. Landry came with us some obvious job skills and training through some turf grass degrees and such, through education-wise. Past couple of years, what gives me great pride is that Landry has not only... He's shown the desire to accept responsibility and the want to for a higher-level responsibility. He has got his pesticide license. He is ready to take on a lead, career leadership role in the Parks Maintenance Division, and that's why we're here today. Landry has done some... Prepared himself for this day, and so we are here to recommend Landry for the opportunity to be a senior parks maintainer in the maintenance division.
Congratulations, Landry. Proud for you. One of the guys that goes unnoticed, but is absolutely essential to make sure things are going well there. Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Williams.
Yes.
Dunning.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Item number four's been pulled, so we move to Municipal Order 2016-36.
Municipal Order approving the probationary appointments of B. Kalen Bird to the position of operations technician one, and Louis W. Borr to the position of labor two in the Public Works Department.
So move.
Second. Motion by Hill, second by Dunning. Mr. DeFabo.
Thank you, Mayor. We have, as you can see by the municipal order, we have two openings, one for an operation tech one and one for a labor two. Let's take the labor two first. We advertised for this opportunity. We had 55 applicants from that distilling process. It's our belief that Mr. Borr is the correct person for this position. The second item involves a operation tech one. One of our former employees, Kalen Bird, has decided that this is where the best opportunity for him exists, and he would like... Has shown a desire to come back, and we're willing to hire him. He has five years' experience, and we're happy about his return. So we recommend both. Brent is here, if you would like to go through the vetting and hiring process.
Are they here with us tonight? I thought so. Didn't know you were trying to hide from me back there. Congratulations. Welcome back. Again, all the things that go on behind the scenes that people don't really notice until it's broken, and that's where you guys come in. We appreciate you all's work. Thank you so much. Any other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Williams.
Yes.
Dunning.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal Order 2016-37.
Municipal Order approving the reappointment of Pat C.T. Sloan to the Bowling Green Warren County Regional Airport Board.
So move.
Second.
By Hill, second by Paragon. This is a reappointment for former Mayor Sloan. Told her it was a lifetime appointment. I think she really believes me this time around, so any other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Williams.
Yes.
Dunning.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal Order 2016-38.
Municipal Order authorizing and approving revisions to the housing choice voucher administrative plan for the city's housing choice voucher program.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Paragon. Mr. DeFabo.
I think it's been said from this dais that HUD always requires us to have a plan for any type of CBG money it spends. One of the more important spending of HUD money is for what used to be known as Section Eight, which is now known as the Housing Choice Voucher. Anytime we make a change, we have to have those written and approved by you. I think it'd be important for Brent Childers to come forward and briefly explain to you the changes that we're making, some of which are nominal, others are of some significance. Brent?
Thank you, Mr. DeFabo, Mayor Commissioners. As Kevin talked about, this is our Housing Choice Voucher Administrative Plan. And the way this works is HUD says, okay, these are some rules that you have to follow. Then you have to write some policies on these other things. So that's why it's a combination of federal regulation and also local option. So the things we're talking about here today are local options. First one I want to talk about is our homeless preference. We've always had a homeless preference, and the person had to reside in a homeless shelter for 30 of the last 45 days. Now, we have two homeless shelters here in Bowling Green, Salvation Army and Brass. With the, I guess, resurgence of support for the homeless community, we wanted to expand that definition. So instead of just being in those two shelters, we went to some partner agencies to provide homeless outreach, homeless services. Hotel Inc., represented today by Executive Director Ron Dell Miller, and also Life Skills. And we wanted to expand that out to give more people the opportunity, but we understand it's difficult for a homeless person on the street for us to just give them a voucher and expect them to locate a unit, negotiate a rent, activate utilities, do all the things that you have to do to secure a place. So we wanted them to have some type of network, some type of support system, and that's where Hotel Inc. and Life Skills come in. So what this allows is for whenever they're outreaching with clients, meeting homeless people on the street, they can provide case manager services, and then they can say, okay, this person is ready. This family is ready for permanent housing. They'll notate that to us, we'll put it on our waiting list, and that person gets a preference to the top of the waiting list. And that only does that until we start to pull from that list. It might be 60 days, it might be 90 days before we pull from that list. So that doesn't automatically get them a voucher, but at least gets them on the list. Whenever we do pull from the list, only 25 percent can be under the homeless preference. So if we pulled 100 families from the list, only 25 could be under the homeless preference. In that way, because we've still... We've got 800 families on that list right now, we want to make sure that we can try to get through to assist those other families, because we understand that there is a lot of needs in our community. So that's the biggest change here, is about the homeless preference and the partnership between the city of Bowling Green, Hotel Inc., and Life Skills. The other parts, the initial inspections, it's always scary whenever you send staff to training, because you sometimes figure out things that you might not have been doing the right way.[1791.51] the right way. So what we found out was, on the initial inspections, we needed to change how we did those for whenever the utilities weren't active. So we thought about what's the best way to do this, what's the most efficient way to do this. What it comes down to is if an inspector goes out to inspect a unit, they don't know that the hot water works or doesn't work, because there's no electricity. So what this does is, that puts that burden on the property manager or the landlord to verify that those things work. And we wanted to do it before the utilities, because we didn't want the tenant to have to pay the deposit, set up the account, do all those steps at the utility, and then it not pass on something else. Maybe the window doesn't work, or it's not big enough, or something like that. So we wanted to make sure all those other things were taken care of before they were out the money for the deposit, setting everything up. So this is just a change in the process, it allows the inspector to go ahead and complete the inspection without the utilities, and then verification's received from the owner or property manager to take care of those. The last two are pretty straightforward, contract closing, we had another meeting that we didn't have to have, so we took that out, we just wanted to update the policy on that, and our biennial inspections. A couple of years ago, whenever HUD was cutting off funding, they came up with what they called cost-saving measures. One of those was allowing us to go to biennial, every-two-year inspections. Previously, we've been doing an inspection every year for every unit, all six hundred and six that we had. We chose that option, we've seen our inspection numbers drop, our inspection costs drop, but we also recognize that sometimes the units that are selected aren't always of the highest quality, so we wanted the ability to go back and inspect those on an annual basis if we deem that necessary. So this just gives staff that ability to say, okay, we need to look at this unit every year, just to make sure that everything stays safe for the tenant. That's the overview of the changes, and all entertaining. Questions, anyone has?
Questions or comments? Yes, sir.
Brent?
Yep.
Going back to where the individual turned on the utilities and so on, and something else is wrong, did I understand they can't get their money back? Can that individual get their money back for the utilities they've had turned on, and something is wrong with their apartment?
If I'm understanding correctly, and I don't know BG MU policy that well, because I don't turn on and off utilities that often, but I think that they would be able to transfer that, we were just still trying to not have to force the tenant to create that situation. And this way, once we pass the inspection, then we know everything else is good, once the utilities are active, then the owner can verify that the hot water works, air conditioner works, heater works, things like that. And the tenant still has the ability to call us and say, hey, I don't have any hot water, we're going to make sure that the property owner addresses that, he has, that they provide hot water for that unit. But I believe that they could transfer deposits, but what that does is that creates more time. This is more also of a time efficiency, not just an efficiency on the tenant part with the damage deposit. So then if we have to wait for the utilities to be active, then what we're doing is we're waiting for a couple more days, whereas we could go ahead and had the inspection done, approved, and moved on.
Comments or questions? Anything else, Mr. DeFabo?
I'm there, thank you.
Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. First reading of ordinance BG 2016 number eight.
Ordinance annexing property by consent, ordinance annexing eighty point three seven acres of property located on Lover's Lane presently, with property presently owned by Living Hope Baptist Church Missionary Incorporated, and said territory being contiguous to existing city limits, and further approving the economic development annexation incentive agreement.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams, Mr. DeFabo.
Thank you, Mayor. As the commission knows, one of our public priorities is to try to expand the city limits when we're being, when we're asked, and to do that through an incentive basis. We're happy tonight to present to you another opportunity for someone who would want to come into our great city and take advantage of that incentive. Gene Harmon, who is handling the details for the city, is going to explain number eight for you tonight.
I'll explain, if you've got questions, this is a voluntary consensual annexation. I was contacted by a local attorney, who I think represents the new owner, who wants to annex his property. You'll notice there's a little bit of difference between their request and what it is, because it's about three tenths of an acre we'd already annexed previously. This is in one of our areas that we have designated as a high interest for annexation, so this is a pretty, pretty good-sized annexation, a fairly major annexation for the city, this eighty acres coming into the city. It is voluntary, totally consensual, and we've got consent signed by the owner.
Comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Late file is municipal order 2016-39.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2016-36 for Crosswinds intake floating transfer pump from Scott &amp; Ritter Incorporated of Bowling Green, Kentucky, in amount not to exceed fifty-one thousand four hundred dollars.
So move.
Second.
A Hill, second by Paragon, Mr. DeFabo.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to express thank you to the commission for entertaining a late file. We, as an organization, try not to do late files, but this one became necessary in order for us to provide service to the public and/or to save money. As the commission knows, and I'm not sure the public does, the City of Bowling Green currently extracts water from the Barren River and transports that water via pumps and motors to the Crosswinds Golf Course, to one of our lakes there, to help reduce the cost of irrigating that fine golf facility. As they can imagine from dealing, you can imagine from dealing with Wakeville Pond, a body of water is an organism that changes, lives and dies, and the Barren River and the particular location where that pump exists is going through some changes, both in terms of susceptibility to drought and/or flooding, as well as underground changes of silting and things that Matt Powell makes a living explaining, and he's here if you have any questions about that. The bottom line is that we want to change the pump from one that floats on the water and thus allows us to extract water from the river without being susceptible to how deep the river flow is, and thus stays away from the silting issue, and still allows us to save approximately thirty thousand dollars a month that it costs to irrigate our golf course. So we're asking you to approve a bid from Scott &amp; Ritter, who was a low bidder, we had two, to allow us to buy this pump. Why it was sensitive is that there's order time, and we want to make sure that we're drawing water before a mass of golfers come onto the golf course, hopefully as soon as the weather breaks in April or so. So that's why we wanted to dovetail it with tonight's meeting. I don't know if the commission knows, we've also had other problems at the lake that we had to deal with, so we had to solve that problem before we could bring this one forward. Matt Powell and/or Brent are here, if you have any questions.
Questions or comments? Call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes, that's the last item on the agenda, we'll be going closed session, our next scheduled meeting is March fifteenth, 2016. Will we be taking a vote coming up?
I don't believe so, no.